All right. I'll call the meeting to order. It is 6:30 on September 12, 2023. This is the study session meeting of the St. Louis Park School Board. And we're in Central Community Center for the first time in our new, but temporary new day. Before I move on to the agenda, I'm going to read our land acknowledgement. We are gathered on the land of the Dakota and Ojibwe peoples. I ask you to join me in acknowledging the Dakota and Ojibwe community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. St. Louis Park Public Schools also acknowledges that it was founded upon exclusions and erasures of many indigenous peoples, including those on whose land this school district is located. This acknowledgement demonstrates a commitment to dismantling the ongoing legacies of colonial power and the district's desire to support the ongoing work of local indigenous communities to thrive in our schools. Okay. Next up, we need to approve our agenda. We received the news today that Superintendent Osai submitted a letter of resignation. In order for the board to take action on this item this evening, we need to amend our agenda to add an action item, which we will insert at the top of the agenda. Following that item, we will have a presentation from the Park Nicklet Foundation, a back-to-school presentation, policy development, second reading 806 Crisis Management, and approval of Policy 806 Crisis Management Communications and Transmittals, followed by adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of an action item on the superintendent's resignation at the top of the agenda?
Certainly.
Moved by Sarah, second by Colin. On our favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The first item on our agenda is an action item. As I stated earlier, I received a letter of resignation from Superintendent Osai today. We have a resolution drafted to accept Dr. Osai's resignation and appoint an acting superintendent. I will read the resolution. Whereas the superintendent of schools, Aston Osai, submitted his resignation on September 12, 2023, and whereas Article 3, Section 4 of the employment agreement with the superintendent allows for termination of the agreement by mutual agreement of the parties, now therefore, I move to accept Dr. Osai's resignation from his employment with the district with an effective date of September 15, 2023. That's number one. Number two, appoint Tammy Reynolds as acting superintendent. So I have made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Virginia. We will have a roll call vote.
Okay.
Kirk Wilsley, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Director Nancini.
Aye.
Director Morrison.
Aye.
Director Davis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cox.
Aye.
Treasurer Yubahim.
Aye.
Heather Wilsie.
Aye.
Director Casey.
Aye.
Chair Casey, pardon me.
The motion carries. Dr. Osai's resignation has been accepted. We thank Dr. Osai for his service to the school district and its students. For the foreseeable future, Tammy Reynolds, Director of Student Services, will serve as acting superintendent while we determine next steps for the superintendent role. Director Reynolds, we thank you for your willingness to serve in this role, and we invite you to take your seat at the table. I want to assure the St. Louis Park Public Schools community that we all remain committed to a successful school year. We have exceptional leaders, highly skilled educators, and an all-around phenomenal staff who will continue to prioritize our students and families each day. Through this transition, we will continue to center students and stay focused on the day-to-day operations that make our schools exceptional places for learning. Please note that we will inform our staff and families of this change shortly, as well as update our stakeholders on the plan for the superintendent role as soon as more decisions are made. On that note, this is just for the board, for the board's information. A couple of hours ago, I spoke with Barb Dorn, who is MSBA's Director of Leadership Development and Executive Search. One of the supports that they can provide is to have Barb attend a special meeting of the board in the next couple of weeks that would help us review our options as we look for an interim superintendent to serve out this school year, as well as answer any questions the board has. She said she could provide a brief overview of the state statutes relative to the position of superintendent and the board's responsibilities in the hiring process, and would also share the differences in the roles of an acting superintendent, an interim superintendent, and then the superintendent, as well as the typical timelines and processes that are used in the selection of each of these positions. So I, unless folks feel otherwise, I think we should take them up on that. I think that's a great offer. So look for some scheduling over to come in the next few days to schedule that meeting over the next. I don't know, it won't be this week, next week, or the week after. Okay, thank you. Our next order of business is discussion item on the Park Nicklet Foundation. So we have Paul Danisich from the Park Nicklet Foundation. He's going to provide an overview of the foundation's partnership with St. Louis Park Public Schools. Yep, you can take your seat there, and then you should be able to sit through the slides on your own.
Thanks.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. So I know you have lots of work to do. I will be concise as possible, but I did have to say because my son is a high school student, junior at the high school here, and he did say, well, what are you doing this afternoon? I said, well, actually, I'm presenting to your school board. And he said, tell them I said hi. So hi from Trip Danisich, a junior in your school. So yeah, I'm here to really just share a little bit about our partnership. We have a really strong partnership between the district and Park Nicklet Foundation and our Park Nicklet Health Services. And that's not going anywhere. We feel it's a real strong commitment to the kids by both parties. And the other thing I'd like to just say in advance of this is that it's a real partnership. None of these are like a customer vendor sort of experience. It takes work from your staff at the schools to make these programs work for the students. And, you know, our staff in the medical side work closely with them at sort of a whole bunch of different levels. And, you know, Tammy can certainly speak to this too, knowing. Just very quickly, I wanted to talk a little bit about sort of our children's health stuff that we do. And an overview of the foundation is we're sort of the volunteer and philanthropy side of Park Nicklet Health Service. So we're not, but we're not a typical health Methodist hospital, like a hospital foundation, because we work so much within the community. And really, a lot of that is from our initial programs right here in St. Louis Park. But we have Methodist Hospital, we have a bunch of primary clinics, specialty clinics, and medical specialties. If you have Health Partners Insurance, you probably use a lot of our providers, sort of thing. So we sort of form sort of a crescent around the city, the west, northwest and southwest side of Minneapolis, and we're part of Health Partners. But just for context, last year, we raised about three, almost three and a half million. We granted out, you know, 1,000, 1,000, 1.72 million in grants to the community. And that sort of speaks to what I just said earlier, that it doesn't all just go to like the cancer center or building a new wing for, you know, Parkinson's research or things like that. We do provide that type of funding and grants, but we do a lot for the community. So our overall impact's over $5 million if you include the volunteers in that because they actually do a lot of that. So this is just a little sort of graph that says, you know, 43% of that funding that we raise goes back to the community. And all of those are in line with our community health needs assessment, which we do every three years. All nonprofit hospitals do them. And that community health needs assessment showed pretty consistently. So I've been part of two of them now. And that mental health and wellbeing is the priority. And this year, well, 2021, when we did the last GINA, they actually assigned a priority to it. It was priority number one. Access to care, access to health, and substance abuse and nutrition and physical activity are the other priority areas. So we find that our community programs tend to go into that sort of access to care and children's, well, mental health and wellbeing categories, if you will. And in that mental health, wellbeing categories, most of our work in the community is around young people. So I probably don't have to tell you this, that, you know, children's mental health wasn't issue before COVID. In fact, the, before COVID, the, you know, medical groups were calling it a crisis. But COVID had worsened it. And we have an estimated 3,000 children in Minnesota alone that have lost a caregiver or a parent. And during the pandemic, nearly half of our students described feelings of hopelessness. And in child bereavement, we're starting to get some new data now that, well, 6%, actually, over 6% now of children in Minnesota will experience the death of the parent before they're 18. So we see these as things that we can address, and we want to do something with our, all the staff that we have. So, you know, we get asked, like, how do we respond to it then? And the way we do it is work with the people who know kids best, which is, you know, the school district and teachers and people who work with kids. So we have three programs, and all of these are in St. Louis Park. St. Louis Park and Burnsville are the only two communities that have, two districts that have all three of these. So we have the central clinic, of course, and then we have the NOW program, which is basically just mental health done through virtual, you know, which we've been doing since 2014. We do that at middle school at your request. And then our Growing Through Grief program is here. So Growing Through Grief is really the biggest one of these because it's in 18 different school districts, if you include some of our new shorter-term programs that we're doing to address sort of community violence and grief around losing loved ones, due to structural racism and community unrest. So that's sort of our location area. So the NOW program is the tele-mental health program. So we work with staff at the middle school, and we provide youth there with just mental health therapy sessions. So these are therapists that are Park Nicklet, therapists that work over at the 3800 campus. And what I love about this is that these are the same therapists that we would take our kids to. And so from a health equity standpoint, I think this is the manifestation of that. And these are no-cost programs, and these are, the kids are triaged for these based on your staff's, you know, knowing the kids and knowing what kids are going to be, have access to mental health therapy and which ones won't, and also which kids will respond to mental health therapy well. And so it's really, that's sort of where the rubber meets the road as far as the partnership and where the partnership is. We couldn't do that. Our therapists couldn't, you know, select the kids or work with the kids to make that happen. We also do it both Spanish and English. I don't think we do it in Spanish here, but we do have a Spanish-speaking therapist. And of course, there's a growing need for those sorts of services. Growing Through Grief, you probably know Dana Easterbrooks, who's been with the district many, many years. She's our grief counselor that works very closely with everybody here. And that program though is large. It's supported almost 700 students and responded to 16 school crisis events last year. So a little trend is that we are seeing more school death-related crises going up. The average has gone up pretty steadily over the last, as long as I've been in the role, five years, and the pandemic did increase it. So currently, right this year, right now, we're seeing, supporting 800 students and their families in that program in 116 schools. So drilling down a little bit just into our district, and I have a cool little report. We went through a process with the Judy's House, the JAG Institute, to sort of start learning how we can evaluate better our programs. And so this is kind of the first fraction of that. It is a process, but I have handouts for you, which give a little bit more information into the students and what we're seeing with bereavement right here in St. Louis Park. But we did see, and it worked with 40 students last year in five of the schools, and in the, there were some days of crisis support. And so with that, Nicole, the program manager, estimates about 1,000 students and staff. And sometimes parents are involved in those supporting events. So we estimate we cover about 83% of your students. We think we could probably do a little bit more. We are looking to see how we can do that. It might take a little innovation on our part. It might take some input from your staff's part. Our NOW program, Diane Kunsat, our therapist, saw 17 students and provided over 27, 271 hours of therapy. And of course, there's central clinic, which I'm really excited about because we're doing some cool things with your CNA program, Certified Nursing Assistance. And Allison and Caleb brought all the health class students over to the clinic last year, and we're talking about doing it earlier in the school year this year. So we're seeing a closer connection. I think this is important because as a parent and as an old camp director, we did some research with the Health Partners Institute with our, which Tammy helped us out with, with the district. So the district participated. And we found that educators feel that having a clinic in the school district helps kids, like, almost all of them felt that it helps kids embrace their own healthcare and learn about their own healthcare. Well, if you think about it, that's a skill for life. It keeps people healthy all throughout. So I think that there's really good value there and good return on investment, if you want to use those terms. So the clinic is having a little bit more of a, we've got a good closer sort of promotion with it. And we needed that in all of the clinics after the pandemic because we effectively lost a generation of students that were used to going, knew about the clinic and were used to going there. So yeah, so we had the 48 CNA students go there and just do their TB tests, get to see the clinic and meet the doctors. And we saw over 200, I know that number is, it is a little low because there's one count, it's a couple of counts that aren't in there. So it was about 225, 250 students last year used, utilized the clinics, and a lot of those were immunizations. So we estimate about 150 or so of our MDS do hours in the clinic. So it's a low estimate, but we feel like, you know, a good estimate, conservative estimate, is around $226,000 of investment into the district. And I like to think of it more, so people like to see dollars, dollar figures, but I like to see it more in the relationships that are involved and, you know, the connection with Children First and everything that they're doing. So that's kind of what we're doing. We are raising money. I'm not going to ask you for money, but I'd like you to be aware of it because things you can do to help, we raise this money every year, and it's about a million five or so that I make an impassioned plea for funding for our board every December. And that's for all of these programs, you know, for all the districts. So that's where that 226 comes in. So we raise that money every year, and we're about 70%, we're over 69 now, into raising $5 million to do this. And so what I just would like everybody to know about is spread the word. Let people know about it. How many times have I talked to people and said, oh, we've got this program called Growing Through Grief? People don't know about it. And it's not just St. Louis Park, but it's many districts. And many people are amazed that they don't know about it because they're like, wow, this makes total sense. You know, they're right in the schools where the kids are doing life. There's no barriers. The kids can go right there to the clinic if they need to, or they can get grief counseling all the way till they graduate high school. So let people know, share the word. If people are interested in serving on our advisory councils, we have one for the clinics. We're doing some more work with Children's First, Children First, and, or, you know, certainly encourage people to make a gift or they're thinking, if children's health, children's mental health is important to them, I'd like to think that we're one of the better places they can make their investment to do actual work because they don't have to help pay for my salary because Park Nicklet pays for the foundation, all of the foundation salaries. So if you give us $100 and you want that to go to kids in getting therapy or getting grief counseling, that total $100 goes to it. And I've worked for nonprofits most of my life, and I've never been able to say that before, so. But anyways, that's what we do. I want to thank you for being a good partner and for supporting your staff to work with us because it does take time. They're very busy, and there's these things called schedules that they have to juggle. And we essentially make them juggle another schedule to make something happen for the kids. So that's very much appreciated for all of us. These were just a couple of things that the kids in Growing Through Grief has drawn, which sort of visualizes grief. I don't know if any of you have experiences of that, but it's quite moving. And when I get to talk to the counselors and the therapists and stuff, I get to hear some stories. Not identifiable, of course, but I get to hear some of those stories firsthand. It's pretty moving, and as, like I said, as an old camp director, I know it's doing immense good for the students here. If you're interested, I'll leave these here, which have a little bit more of Growing Through Grief information about the business, but thank you.
Thank you. Great, so much great information. Yeah, I'll be Akeem.
Yeah, I just want to say thank, thank you. Ball goes above the school, you know. He reached out during the COVID. He reached marginalized communities, you know. I didn't get a chance to say thank you during the COVID time. We worked together with the vaccinations.
That's right.
You know, and the community appreciates that. And we're looking forward to seeing you in different programs.
We have a similar program in my school, and you're right, it is frustrating. Not frustrating, but like there is a lot of schedules. But I think that educators in general are so appreciative of kids being able to get therapy in school so that they don't have to, so parents don't have to pick them up because any kind of barrier like that. So it's like really working towards my dream of wraparound services in our school districts. So I really appreciate all of the work, and I can speak very firsthand about the grief counseling. And so I really appreciate the work that this district has done in partnering. So thank you.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that was, I've said this before, so bear with me, but you haven't heard it before, but that when I, I went to an AMSD conference earlier, or late last year, and they were talking about trauma impact on students and in that behavior, right, that follows. And so when you say providing all services to our students, and that's your services as a counseling, all the work that we do, how important is it? Because a lot of student behavior, nacking up, can be related to these traumas. And if kids aren't getting the help that they need because they've had a family member who died, or they're not doing nutrition, or they're not, you know, or they're seeing abuse at home, or whatever it is, or experiencing abuse, how helpful is that services like this? So thank you for providing those services. Thank you for being a part of that partnership. You talked about like the money side of things, and, you know, we often get, why aren't the schools doing more? And we know we'd love to be doing more, but similar, you know, we have our budgets and we have things that have to do. So I think we appreciate all the partnerships that you're providing. One of my questions, last, it's about the NOW program, actually, and I'm wondering about two things. One might be a harder one to ask about, but just if there's broad strokes, you can think about sort of generally the student needs through that. What kinds of service, you know, what are those kids coming to? Is it anxiety? Is it, you know, things like that? And then also, the other question I have is about the number of students we're serving. We're serving 17. Is that an issue of capacity from a funding side? Is that about what the max needs is, that's risky? Do you know anything related to that?
I have these on each one of those programs. They're written for a donor audience, but they do give some of that information, like on the NOW program in particular. To answer your question, anxiety is a big one, behavioral issues, problems at home, you know, a lot of times. It was interesting during the pandemic when our therapy, and the pandemic, you know, even though we were already doing therapy by virtual, it shook them up too because of the technical needs. And they were doing therapy with kids on FaceTime, so they were in their homes. Or they were not in their homes because their home was the problem. And so they were doing it down in the apartment common room. And so they had to adjust all that sort of thing. So those are some of the issues that they're dealing with, anger management. They might have academic difficulties, depression. You know, there is a lot of that now. We've got plenty of data on that. So those are the types of things that Diane is seeing those kids for. As to, you know, I haven't been presented with a request for more of that from the middle school. I do remember a conversation with the high school, looking for some more services there. And that's why we're raising the money. So I would probably say money is the largest, funding is the largest barrier. But I wouldn't, I would be remiss in saying that like Park Nicklet Behavioral Health could just, just do it. They are really, you know, everybody's struggling for staff, especially therapists of color. There's a statistic that, you know, we're, people are crying out for black male therapists. And it's, there's such a small percentage of black male therapists in schools or, you know, getting, getting the degrees that we have. So it's a larger, larger challenge. So yeah, I would say funding and then just staffing are two of the issues. But any of those needs should always just present them. Just let me know where you're at. Because I don't have goals for like getting the numbers up to a certain amount. The foundation doesn't give me goals for that. The goal is meeting the community needs and responding where we can in the best way that we can. So is that answer your questions?
Thank you as well. I'm an elementary school teacher, and I, the value of the work is, I mean, not in this district, but I see the needs and I see the value of your services. And it's just, I mean, if I can plug for your fundraising, I see it firsthand, and I know the value of it.
I just have a question for you real quick. You have it at all levels of the schools or just at the middle school and the high school in your program?
Growing Through Grief is at all levels of the school. The NOW program is located in the middle school. Our other two sites are in the high school, but the St. Louis Park specifically wanted to direct that to the middle school.
Okay.
And I mean, that can be reevaluated anytime, but that's where we're doing it here. From what I know, it's going well.
Yeah, no, I think it is, from what I hear too. I just wondered how many levels we headed at. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just the middle school right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. We have four elementary schools, we just mentioned three of them here. So.
I don't think there's a grief, there's not a grief group at PSI at the moment. And I think that's because of the need, there was the need there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is amazing partnership. Our community partnerships are so valuable to us, as you can see. Wonderful work.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Okay. School started last week. And do you have, do you want to make any comments?
I just very briefly checked in with Patricia on Monday, and we are at 4,160, page 12 currently. Our early learners started yesterday, but we have a fun video for all of you to see that really captured our first couple of days of school.
I'm kind of not going to be able to.
I did too.
How are you looking forward to the mosque?
Reading and connection to lunch.
How are you looking forward to the mosque?
Reading and connection to the big deal too.
I like reading, which is.
Yeah, I think you'll do okay.
Reading is a good skill to have and a good love to have, or I can't.
Lighting is a good skill to have and a good glove to have, or a candle. You're going in a second grade, more slipper. I can't see you, still have a glove and a candle. I heard you were so excited to go back midnight this morning. I like that angle.
Thank you. I did neglect to share too, we had a great back to school rally with our staff, all staff that Monday. We had trivia and contests. We had two groups, three groups of two. And we had basketball from competition from each site. So it was just, it was really, it was a fun day. The high school was filled with people and we're happy to be back together. Good start to the year.
Great. Did you want to say anything about the, the O'Reilly brand recipients or?
Well, I have that too. We did have a number of staff who were honored for demonstrating in their daily work the core values of St. Louis Park Schools. And it really was fun that they came from all different facets of our school district and it was a really great group of people.
Yeah.
Yes, we sure can. Don Colvin from Aquila, Kathy Steppes is from Lennox, Kelsey McKenzie from Peter Hobart, Kelly Hefsted, is that high school? Lynn Brown here from District Office, makes sure everybody gets paid. And he has, Summerun is from Early Learning and Judy Contreras from PSI.
They were all so excited and Mr. McKenzie walked past me on his way down too, received the award. I was not expecting that.
Thank you.
And I got to go to Peter Hobart on the first day of school and it really was amazing to watch the kids come in. I think my favorite was a kindergartner who was locking up with her parents and her parents were kind of like, okay, you know, like how's this going to go? And kindergarten just walked right up to the door and
see ya.
And had to like wipe a little tear, so it was great.
We did have balloons and bubbles for the early learners yesterday.
Awesome. Yes. Cool. Well, thank you. Okay. Policy development, second reading, 806, crisis management. And I am going to, I have quite a bit of some overview here and I'm going to read. This evening, policy 806 is before the board for a second reading and a vote later in the agenda. Policy 806 is our crisis management policy and there are two changes reflected in this language. First, in the purpose section, we've deleted a line that is not relevant to St. Louis Park Schools and references charter schools. And this change was recommended by the Minnesota School Boards Association. The other change is in section 2A12, which you can see on page two of the policy. This change makes it clear that we will conduct five lockdown drills each school year, which is required by law. Additionally, it specifies that these drills will be conducted when students are not in the building. This is specific to lockdown drills as defined in the policy. This is a change that we are making after speaking with district staff and looking closely at the research related to how best to conduct these drills in a way that ensures our students and staff are safe while avoiding unnecessary trauma for students. With the support of our district staff, we engage with a variety of stakeholders, including the district's crisis management committee, building leaders, teachers and families about this change. We also spoke with experts in the field about best practices. Specifically, we connected with Dr. James Densley and Dr. Gillian Peterson, co-founders and co-presidents of the Violence Prevention Project Research Center, which is a national nonprofit based in Minnesota dedicated to reducing violence for research. They have written a book and have extensive resources on their website. We would have liked to have them here in person tonight, but they weren't able to be here. So Dr. Densley recorded a video for us, which is the next slide.
Good evening. My name is James Dennis Lee. My name is James Dennis Lee. I'm professor and department chair, criminology, criminal justice, and federal state university. And I'm also the co-founder and co-author of The Violence Prevention Project, How to Stop Mass Shooting in the Midwest. For several years, myself and my colleague Gillian Peterson at Hamlin University have been engaged in research into the life histories of mass shooters and school shooters in the United States. And as part of that work, we've explored the role of active shooter and lockdown drills in the lives of schoolchildren. And I'm here this evening via video, because I can't be there in person, to share some of our research findings, which may help inform your decision-making this evening. The first thing I want to say is that despite the terrible tragedies that have occurred, school shootings are still rare events. And the risk with routine active shooter drills and lockdowns in schools is that we are sending a message that is disproportionate to the actual risk of violence itself. That we are signaling to our young people that our schools are unsafe and that this creates a perception of fear and anxiety within our school buildings. Secondly, we know from our research that school shooters tend to be schoolchildren. They are not outsiders coming in, they are insiders already very familiar with the routines of the school building. School shooters are current or former students of the schools that they target. So what this means is that they too have been run through the very same lockdown drills as everybody else. And there's a concern that on the one hand, that may have trained them in the exact security response of the school, thus making it easier for them to circumnavigate that response. Or worse, by going through the routine of these drills over and over again, we've tacitly incentivized this form of violence. We've normalized it and we've taught young people that this is a possible solution to their problems. So we might be training an entire generation of school shooters without even knowing that we're doing it. Now thirdly, we also know from the research that for particularly students who have existing trauma histories and exposure to gun violence, these active shooter and lockdown drills can be terribly distressing and traumatizing. For students with disabilities, they are also especially traumatizing and distressing. We have to be very careful with the messaging that we send to our young people to ensure that they feel safe and cared for in their school environments and that the prospect of violence does not feel imminent and is not overwhelming what is else is going on within the school environment. So we are concerned that these active shooters and lockdown drills can be incentivizing violence, normalizing violence, and can be traumatizing an entire generation of young people. And it's for all those reasons, I think we have to defer to our adults in the building. The teachers, the administrators and everybody else who can lead us through this challenge, as opposed to putting it on the backs of the young people themselves. And I think that's how we get to a better solution to this problem. Thank you.
Our goal is to ensure that our school communities are safe for students, staff, families and our community. And I'm grateful to the Violence Project for their advice and work on this critical issue. To be clear, this policy still requires our schools to conduct lockdown drills. It just brings us in line with the law and requiring five each school year, which we were already doing, but was not in our policy. And it ensures that we are using best practices to keep everyone safe in a crisis. We can and will still partner with law enforcement and first responders on drills to ensure that everyone is prepared in case.
My name is James Dennis Lee.
Questions or discussion from the board?
Just makes a lot of sense on what he presented as far as putting fear into our students' minds and anxiety. Just makes sense. Surprised we hadn't done it earlier or no one's researched this before.
I think it's important to me as a mom and as a educator in the buildings that deal with crises on a daily basis. The conversations that are had between staff members and then the training of the staff becomes incredibly important. And how the, to be frank, how staff are going to communicate the plan to children. And so I just want to be cognizant and, I don't know, I'd like to be kept informed and maybe a part of the conversation of how we are implementing it in a way that everybody is informed. Particularly, I'm not entirely sure where we are with trauma-informed training for staff, but those are the things that I'm concerned about. You know, there are crises that occur in buildings that aren't necessarily related to an active shooter or anybody getting into the building, but there's still a crisis in which adults in the building have to act in a particular way because whether that's holding in place or things like that. And so I guess I just as a, I just want to stay a part of that conversation and know what the, how we're moving forward.
Okay. Well, seeing no other questions or comments, we move on to our action agenda, which just left one item on. Approval of policy 806 crisis management. Recommended, this board approved the adoption of policy 806 crisis management as presented. Just heard about it. Thanks to the policy committee members who have been working on this and to the staff who they've been engaging with. Is there a motion to approve the policy 806 as presented? I'm Akeem. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ken. Any further discussion? Anyone favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. All right, we are at communications and transmittals. Does anyone have anything to share?
I do. So I met with PEAK, which is the Parent Engagement Advisory Committee for the high school. So for all of you high school teachers or family members out there, PEAK is looking for more active involvement. There's two things. The 6425, which is the, did I get the numbers right? 6425, which is the newsletter, will have a link to the PEAK newsletter. And they're looking for volunteers for several different things. They, the committee itself needs some volunteers. But in addition, they're looking for some volunteers to sign up for goodies, to, for staff appreciation week, for conferences, et cetera, and just other opportunities to get involved. And they're also looking at ways to engage with the community a little bit more and get more parental involvement at the high school. And so if you have questions, you can certainly reach out to me because I sit on, I'm the staff liaison or the board liaison to the high school. And I can get you in touch with all of the PEAK members and they are, Rony is helping Julie and I've known Rony for a while. Her daughter was a part of my Brownie troop when I was a Brownie troop leader. And she and Julie have like really upped their game on communication and getting parental involvement. So look for all of those fine opportunities to get involved at the high school.
That reminds me, I know we have a couple of board members who are going off the board this year. We've had, typically we've changed our school liaison assignments, like now for the school year, but I know we'll have some shuffling. So if, if anyone is sitting here who wants to change their assignment or like needs to for whatever reason.
It would look really weird for me too.
Maybe not. Not in Virginia, just some of that, but anyone else, if you, you know, I don't, I don't, I think people have been on some of these assignments for a couple of years. So if you're looking for something fresh, just let me know and we can shuffle the, those school liaison assignments if we need to. Other items?
Sure. I participated in the senior program advisory council meeting today and always enlightening the things that they do there. And as a reminder, senior program, they revised their mission statement today. They did not revise this part. This was, had been in standing. They say it's for people who are 50 and better. So anybody who meets, I'm looking around. Some of us are already, some of us are already there, so yes. But plenty of programs and plenty of activities and like the birthday celebration that they do for people's birthdays that are in a month. There's a popper trunk event that's happening, I think at Lennox this weekend, a flea market type thing. There's a craft fair coming up, all sorts of things that, that I think it's a, it's a wonderful resource that we have. Lennox, that we have, senior program, that we have places for seniors to go there, you know. Tris was there to talk about the, about some programming and stuff too, that we're looking at how the classes that we offer. And there's, I think, a new computer lab and some things, some great opportunities there. So that's really exciting. The other thing, Chair Casey and I attended the AMSD meeting on Friday and that's association of metropolitan school districts and its school board members and superintendent. And it was a presentation by the Morse Leatherman Group, who always do a really good job talking about what are the issues that are on Minnesotans' minds. And unlike a straw poll at the, at the state fair, this is like a real poll that's done where they, they weigh metro, they weigh, they have greater Minnesota, they look at gender, they look at all sorts of things in terms of people's responses, political persuasion, just to get a sense on where people are at and issues matter. It's always really interesting stuff and interesting presentation. And I think we, these board members have access to that complete survey.
I think they're public.
Yeah, and I think it's public information too. So if you're interested in it, it's worthwhile just to take a look at that, just to get a poll sometimes. So there were definitely, and some questions about schools and about where people are at and things. And I think it's just enlightening just to see how that has changed over time, how COVID has influenced that, how political discussion has influenced that as well.
Okay. Who else have anything? I have one more thing from intermediate district 287, which I've been here many times saying it's a district of 11 member districts. And now we are 12th. We voted to approve Minnetoka to actually rejoin after, I don't know, they've been gone for longer than I've been around there, so a while. And so they are back and we are serving some Minnetoka students already. So back to Minnetoka, now we're 12.
And happy birthday to Chair Casey. But this week.
Thank you. It was something.
Sorry.
All right, well, if there are no other discussion items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. By Sarah, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Colin. Anyone favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.